We're off here.
All right, 21, we will go ahead and kick off our work session. We really are kind of a one topic today. This is intended to give board members a better opportunity to dig into the budget with the administration. Star Marsette is in the room with me. I am here, Elisa Vaquellis, and I have board member, I think all I have is Margot Bellamy. Yeah, we seem to exit full screen so I can still see. So I believe that is all I have for board members right now. I will keep an eye out and if others join us. Oh, I see a board member Mitchell, she joined us. And so I'll keep an eye out for anybody else. And we have Dr. Bishop here in the room with us as well. So at this time, I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Bishop.
Thank you. So we have our presentation ready for the board meeting. But because all the board members have reviewed it and been able to have it in your hands and that we'll have the budget here as well, we'll take you through that at the general meeting. But right now, we have the PowerPoint up in case you have any questions that we can quickly go to that page. But as process wise, in conferring with the board president, we are ready to just jump right into questions because board members, as you know, Member Marsette said, did their homework. And so we'll just keep that up so that we can, if you want to share, I don't know if your copy had page numbers on it. We did.
Yeah.
So if you want a page number, that way we can orient for those that might be listening online to the page that we're discussing and answering questions. At that point in time, just because we're half in the room and half off, Jim, I will go ahead and defer to you or just kind of direct that as questions come up, as the board president selects the questions from the hands. We'll do it this way, since some of us don't have that right in front of us. All right, so to moderate, you can start.
All right, so first up is Board Member Marsette.
So I did ask a lot of questions, which Jim answered, but it kind of caused some more questions, Jim, sorry. So one of the questions I have, for some reason, I was under the assumption, and that's my call, that we were not going to take transfer money out of our reserves to pay for anything. But then I saw that people transportation deficit, that we are transferring from the general fund, so we are taking money out of our reserves. So my question is, are we taking anything else out of the reserves for anything else other than public transportation?
Not at this time. Okay, Member Marsette, not at this time. This budget assumes a transportation deficit, and we know that we're going to have to shift general fund money to pay a little over 1.8 million of that. There is the student nutrition deficit that we haven't addressed yet, and it's not in the budget. But we'll have to wait and see a little bit more until we get clarification from Esser 2, as the president still stands up his cabinet and all of the secretaries. And we get department guidance, we might find that there's other sources of funding to help cover that deficit. But it's certainly possible at some point that we'll have to address that. It's not addressed in the budget, though, because it's a this FY cost, not a next FY cost.
So just to follow up, then, at this point, given the budget we have, we really don't know if we'll have to take, I'm just, I want to repeat what you said so I make sure I understand it, that we don't know for sure that there'll be anything else we have to take out until we know what other monies we may get, and it may be after we approve this budget.
That's correct.
Can I ask you a question? Jim, are the funds for people transportation coming out of the operational money or the board savings? The fund balance?
We put it as part of the budget. When we built the budget, one of the expense lines in a zero balance budget was $1.8 million towards transportation.
Yeah, I think that's the core of the question.
He answered, he says, yes, it would come out of reserves and fund balance.
Okay, you shared that it's coming out of reserves and fund balance?
I think I misspoke or missed something. In the FY 22 budget, we think we're going to have a transportation shortfall, which we have addressed, coming out of the general fund. So for next year, it's already in the budget, so it won't touch fund balance. Things that might hit from this year's deficits, as we address them in the May-June-July timeframe, those might come out of fund balance. And a good example would be a transportation deficit for this fiscal year or a student nutrition deficit for this fiscal year. But in the FY 22 budget, we didn't budget anything like the $8.3 million out of the fund balance.
You clarified it, thank you, that was the original question.
Yeah, no, thank you, Jim, it's just, you know, and I guess the reason I asked that is because the preliminary budget said 21-22, but you've explained it, so thank you.
Are there any other board members that have questions for Dr. Bishop and her team?
Elisa, I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I'm just curious, because King Tech was one of my schools last year, I believe. I'm just wondering, when we went through this, I didn't think about it at the time as much, but they're losing two office admin. And I know that they're, I think part of that's because you're combining their personnel with the Alaska Middle College School personnel, and AMCS is gaining one office admin. But when I was over there, when it was one of my schools, it didn't seem like they had a lot of people. I'm assuming this is all metrics based?
Member Mitchell, that is correct. There is the AMCS split, where you can see that on the King Tech principal, part of the salary has been reprogrammed underneath AMCS. So you see a minus .5 and a .5, but it's not really a change to a human being at the school. And it's the same on a counselor that's being funded out of different money. And under the office admin, it's a net of 1.0.
Yeah, and it just seems, I mean, I guess it's all metrics based, but it seems like if you're combining two schools, maybe there's some synergy there, I don't know.
And the reality is, when we look at the alternative schools, they're all different from pure metrics driven, and we just look at what their needs are in order to perform their function. And it's less, in many cases, about enrollment and more about can they get the mission done with the people they have?
Okay, and this is, it's a little embarrassing to ask this in my third year as being a board member, but when you do these things, do you consult with the principals? Or is it more sort of at the admin level, and then you just let the principals know?
Oh, no, we consult with, specifically on that, with Kern, with Missy Phrase, with secondary. Andy and I don't decide what we think King Tech should have.
Well, if it's metrics based, it would make sense for you to make that decision. But if it's not, because it's more of a special program. So they obviously are comfortable that they can do that. I'm just thinking about our mission of trying to get more kids internships, and I think some of that work is happening through folks at King Tech. And I want to make sure that we can support that, given that that's one of our three goals, is to get kids college and career ready. So, thank you.
For the record, I just wanted to note that, remember, Dave Donnelly has joined us on Zoom, as well as Member Hurley here in the boardroom-ish. And so, other questions from board members on budget and everything budget related?
Well, I have a lot of questions.
Okay, then I'll start. Go ahead, ask another one.
Um, and some of these, again, Jim, are just clarification on your answers that you gave me. And one of the things, on page 17, well, I looked at, so it doesn't match these pages, because I did the PowerPoint online. But on page 17, it was school-based changes next year. And it said, "Method-based teacher reductions need enrollment." And I said, what is method-based teacher reductions? I think I know, but I wanted to make sure. And so Jim, you said reductions were made, keeping the PPR the same, based on projected lower enrollment. So we kept the PPR the same as far as what was going to happen in the classrooms, but the metrics that we based everything on, on how much schools get that changed?
No, basically, the PTR, the metrics, the pupil teacher ratio. And let's turn it to the page that has, the one that had the pink on it. One more, two more, right there. So this was just a demonstration to show how significant the Esser 2 monies really did support the program. So had we not put Esser 2 monies, about $24 million was at the people range of buildings and 4 million outside, to be, you know, with the cost of the whole district making up that about 28 million. It would have increased by four, and that's what we wanted to demonstrate, but it went down. But schools nonetheless, and I shared with principals today, schools nonetheless will have, and you feel it the same when you're one less teacher, because you feel it, because you have to reorganize through the program. But those were based off of their original metrics. And so a school may have lost students, which would cause them to lose a teacher based on the same metric. Yeah, so, and we're finding that, we'll really be able to shore that up again and really, when we survey and find out, what is the real actions of our parents coming back and off? And one of the outliers, and it shows in the TA things, is really the kindergarten. Interestingly enough, I've just, through just being in the community and knowing people and meeting people, I've had more than not, more kindergartners who should have started kindergarten this year that were held back, and their parents specifically didn't want them to experience COVID school. And so they kept them out. So the kindergarten is one that we're really going to pay attention to, because those are the data that we have from these, you know, from our preschools we have. But there's this out there, so we have them from siblings. So there's still a potential to change. But in understanding our school leaders and having to adjust and make new schedules, it is true that there is going to be a loss, and that really relates back to student enrollment.
Can I, can I ask something real quick, or Star, do you still have a few?
Go ahead, you ask yours, and I've got a list, so.
Okay. Well, as we were talking, as you asked that question, going back to the page 17, I think it was. So absent the Esser money, I mean, the Esser money is equivalent to 235 teachers, basically. So to...
More than that, actually, Member Mitchell, actually, more than that, because we utilize the Esser funds for IT things and everything. But as far as teachers are concerned, you're correct with the large majority of them. But Esser funds were also used for other purposes.
It was, it's 50 million altogether, right?
That is correct, 50.1.
Not always used this year.
So actually, only half of it was used.
No, 80% of it.
80% what?
About 80%, we have reserved about 10 million for the following year in carrying us forward.
Okay, but only a little more than half of the 50 million was used to keep the metric-based teachers.
That's correct, a little more than half.
So if we, if that Esser money doesn't, if we don't have anything in the following year, it's going to be a big hit, to the point that you were making Ms. Vaquellis at our last meeting, or in our small...
Very true.
One time, one doesn't solve our problems.
So I wonder, how much of this are you guys going to be going over during the board meeting this evening? Are you going to be going through this presentation, or only if we pull it?
Yeah, a little bit. No, we're going to go ahead and run through it and share that during that time. If you'd like, for process purposes, to pull it, we're prepared to do the presentation in the public.
I think it would be good to do, because I think it would be really, I think it's important for people to realize that, you know, absent that money, there's a lot of, a lot of, it just would have a huge implication if we didn't have that money.
Absolutely.
Other board members have any other questions? I know Star's got her list, I'm just looking to see if there's anybody else. All right, Star, you're up.
I might ask for the rest of us.
We're going to do Alicia, because she hasn't, Board Member Hurley, she hasn't asked any questions yet.
Yeah, it's not necessarily about this budget, but we talked earlier in the year, when we were predicting a shortfall on really pushing for innovation. Now we have all this tech, is it the feel, what is the feel on capturing some of the lessons learned or the new skills learned during the pandemic that might turn into, as Member Mitchell pointed out, costs that we need to deal on the road? Are we going to start experimenting with some of those?
Absolutely. Absolutely, that's a great question. And, you know, through, when we're healthy to, through the board president, and then the other, wanted to share that the purpose of this grant, essentially, and the bigger thing, is to get schools started again, get schools back, support schools and support education to really infuse it for the money to get it back. And so we've utilized it in that way to get us back essentially on our feet, knowing that the same time, the planets are being aligned, if you will, with really strong board goals, that says, these are what we believe in. And so we're moving forward with the knowledge we have about what's happened, you know, and how we can work, and what kids need, and what they like, and costs and things like that, as well as organizing around the goals, but also looking for efficiencies. But we felt it necessary through this budget, with the stress and the unknowns and the stressors at home, and to get on our feet and move forward with those working groups to come and present a better way to utilize our work, or to focus our work. And one of those that's already started is really, in the past, remember, we wanted to increase the opportunity for gifted learning. And so that really adjusted the, not the highly gifted, but the Ignite program. And we made some changes, and we didn't have, you know, the time to, we, at budget time, you had to adjust the budget, and then you'd have a plan. Well, the way that the budget is like this all the time, it's very difficult to just have this plan. So we're utilizing, getting back on our feet. And that's one of the things, we have a working group right now of parents and teachers. I think child, kids are on it. Jenny's department is leading that, Dr. Knutson. And a plan, outcome of that, is coming for the next budget season, about how we can better meet the goals, as well as really work through the budget constraints that we're going to have. And so we're going to, on a large scale, begin to do that, utilizing it. So it isn't, well, let's go back to normal. Because frankly, and I think what the board has shared as well, is that normal was not good enough for a lot of our kids and a lot of our families. Our outcomes needed to be addressed, our achievement. And so the idea that, let's just get back to normal, please don't think that this budget is trying to do that. This budget is working to get us on our feet, to really get folks back to work, get to do what we know, and then plan as we move forward. Because the goals are a primary position, and really those outcomes, not just a goal is a goal, but what stands behind them is kid success. So that's a great question. Getting back to school, though, with the least amount of additional stress on people, I can share, at this level, and probably the building management level, just the day in and day out of operating in the pandemic school probably has taken all the bandwidth. And so we really need to settle that down, get going. And I would say that the same is true for teachers as well. I mean, it's like, ah, no other change. So we want to really move forward with the sights on the future, utilizing this grant for the purpose of getting school back first. I know it's a long answer to that, but it's not forgotten. I see, Board Member Bellamy's hand raised.
Yes, thank you. There is a lot about this budget that I am just really pleased about, the alignment with our goals and guardrails, the framework for the strategic planning. I think all of those are new ways of doing business, and they're great, and they should guide us well. If we could take a minute or two to go over pages 16 and 17, which really are the changes for next year. Well, I guess I don't, I just have a couple of questions. And the one has to do with the 44 positions. I know, those are teacher additions, and I understand the history behind them. I guess my question is, are we going to restructure those positions in any way to meet the mental health initiative?
That's a great question, Member Bellamy. 30 of those are putting back into the general fund, health teachers with their original program. 14 staff are based around self-contained classrooms, just needing more people to cover the prep times. At this point in time, at this point in the year, restructuring those right now, I would say that, no, we're not going to say, we're going to have mental health professors rather than health teachers. But knowing that the goal is still in the forefront, and our work with other inputs is still there. But this was strictly to move back into school with the least amount of disruptions coming off of the spring that we are. Be able to have our feet on the ground to move forward again. That's for health teachers, as well as Ignite. Because those were the two main, kind of rethinking of programs to meet students' needs and utilize staffing in a different way to meet goals. Those were our attempts in the past, and just seeing how just more time is needed, the ability to do that this spring, and to have the deliverables that the board had asked us for last time, we wouldn't have that available. So get back on our feet, participate in working groups to move forward with those recommendations.
Okay, and that's what I thought. This is really a recovery budget.
Correct.
So, so the number, total number of, and then again, I know Jim explained it, and I have some cryptic notes on the charter school costs there. That's, most of that is from what we've had to do this year, correct?
Well, actually, we, through the president, to Member Bellamy, we are still expecting Family and Frontier to have a pretty significant student population next year than they've had historically. We believe, because a higher allotment, reputation, huge backlog on their waiting list, that they weren't able to accept everyone, that those two programs are going to stay very large. And as a result, they, we need to budget for that. You have the allotments for all the parents and students, you have more teachers, more additional AAs. The charter schools, or the three correspondence homeschool programs, hired multiple AAs to be able to process thousands of allotments. And it just takes more staff, and it takes more money for the allotments, naturally. So that's really where, what that represents, is Family and Frontier growth.
Okay.
And because it's year-over-year, right? We didn't budget for Family and Frontier to be really large this year.
Right.
We budgeted before the pandemic happened. So what this represents is a year-over-year comparison of this current year's budget, where Family and Frontier were supposed to still be small, to next year, where we know they're going to be much, much bigger.
Okay.
And to that, Member Bellamy, and I just, like you said, in the process of making it known and having an understanding, the funds that are directed to charter schools are statutorily driven, very, very, very specifically driven. And what the board has the influence is with the original charter or the original contract. And so we can address those through the contract as they come up for renewal at the board level, from APC board, the board that governs kind of the curriculum, if you will, and other budgets of the charter school. Those can be adjusted at that time, and we do have some coming up, and we can put those in the board contact about the times. But those, the actual funds, and how they spend their money is driven by the agency. What they receive is driven by the statutory requirements. That they have the ability to do it is up to this board in regard to a contract from the board to the board.
Okay, thank you. I'll come back, let somebody else ask a question.
Okay, thank you. Member Donnelly, you have your hand raised.
Yeah, thank you. Can you tell me more about the need for the new dual enrollment coordinator?
Sure, so I can share a little bit, and I believe Kathy Moffett is on. It's actually a position that was in the system as a counselor prior to this time. And we had the counselor on our side, the K-12 side, and the university had this coordinator on their side. And in our new contracts and what we're working to ensure the graduation and what happens, this is now a dual enrollment coordinator rather than a counselor specifically. Counseling services for K-12, we combined that program, it was, I think, three teachers then, that we had changed it to, into King Tech, to utilize all staff. And Member Bellamy had made a reference to that in regard to the admin. And so we took two separate programs that had admin and counselors, and really put them together, and then defined what the work is. And the work for AMCS is actually a dual enrollment coordinator that we actually will expand to the rest of the district, as we say, we open up dual enrollment programs. So if you notice, there might be a change in counselor as well, but it's called a dual enrollment coordinator, because that's actually true to the work that they're doing.
Is that really an $80,000 a year job?
I would say yes. If you, you're going to get what you pay for, we do the same thing with all of our employees. These are educated positions, people with experience or education that can add value to the organization.
But why do they need special training if they're just a coordinator for the dual enrollment?
Member Donnelly, I'm not sure if you're thinking of coordinator as someone who just organizes something, but coordinator here in our building, and the way they're used educationally, our people, we have coordinators for our curriculum. And they are actually employees who have generally additional experience than a BA in that field to be able to organize it. They really take on budgetary roles, as well as supervisory roles in organization of the work. And so they're actually coordinator in the sense of the educational system. Isn't necessarily an organizer, it's actually someone with expertise.
All right, next up, so I've got Star, then Alicia, then Margot.
So, based on the number of students that we're projecting back in '22, which is about 75%, I mean, we don't have anything certain, but we think that. And the fact that we are reducing staffing, I think it's a total of 235 plus...
235.
Right, but we won't have that necessarily. We don't, I mean, we're really projecting things we're not sure of, right?
In student?
In '22. I mean, because this budget is for FY 21-22, right?
Certainly, just very clear to the board, we used our best judgment in believing. We kind of cut the difference between what we are and what we were in the middle. And we based it off of evidence in regard to, and the key feature was, a lot of our students went to virtual even within. And what Jim shared about the charter schools still feeling like charter schools, and really district schools still feeling that, no, I think these people who came to us from the outside will stay, and that additional people from the outside will stay as, because we have a waiting list as positions open. So as people in our own district who have chosen either charters or other virtuals start to become to come back, they feel like they can back fill it, but we did only do it at 75%, not 100%.
So my question is, have we taken any consideration, you know, we are looking at a reduction in the population of Anchorage by 4%. Have we taken into any consideration of that population that we might lose? Not necessarily to this, and a projection, because we've gone from 301,000 to, I believe, 280-something. And we know that we've suffered those reductions in the past. And we know that we've suffered those reductions in the past. Have we done any kind of estimate or has that been factored into this?
Member Marseth. The work with the...
Yes, ma'am.
If you could just share like how the demographics went and what you considered. In, in, of any year, this is not a rocket science, but we should consider growth and all that. Can you share that?
We, we did in fact assume that Anchorage was getting smaller, so you would lose some kids, but not, you know, dramatically smaller, like 25% of the kids would leave the district because they left the state. But we did assume that we would have lower enrollment just normally because of the outflow out of Anchorage. But then we also looked at the numbers going into private schools where a lot of families really couldn't afford it, but they went there because they really didn't have a lot of option. They, they had to work. So you'll probably have a higher percentage of those parents who can come back to ASD. And then we talked to homeschool principals and neighborhood principals who have talked to parents about, you know, a number, a large number of parents don't prefer homeschool as their primary option. And maybe like me and my wife are not the best equipped people to be the teachers in the home. So that's where we came up with the 75%. It was a number of variables to include a slight outflow.
Yeah, that's what I was asking, Jim. It just wasn't clear what variables you had included in there. So I just, I'm just asking for clarification. Thank you.
All right, next up is Member Hildy.
So on the Green and Eagle River positions, is it, is it going to be ready this fall? Are we for sure going to have those positions?
We're happy through, through the President. Yeah, we are thrilled. They're ahead of schedule, if not on schedule, because they've had the opportunity to build while no one was in the schools. And Member Donnelly had asked about the BPO for that. And during his, like when he pointed out, and I wanted to get, bring that up as well, that the addition of the BPO is just metrics-based to be able to, when the BPO moved and they combined it with, to get, but to get, but they didn't need a whole BPO, so now they need a whole BPO again. And that's why it's larger. And there's one added there. But we look to be back in service into those schools and operate.
Will there be like a community for the community to see the school or public, you know, videos or something?
Right now, they're not ready. We'd probably do that in the summer. And then in addition, depending on the emergency order, whether it's large gatherings still or not, indoor, outdoor, that would all determine what we can do. We're believing we will be ready for students, and it is pretty exciting to go by those schools. But all of those are to be determined based off of the emergency orders, whether it would be a Zoom, everybody can Zoom, or you can go back, so.
I suppose I could get a tour before I leave in April.
I bet we could work something out. And in fact, Tom Roth is on. We can maybe find a tour really in March, the beginning of March, maybe? Find a tour. Would that work, Mr. Roth, to be able to bring people to see the progress?
Yeah, Dr. Bishop, absolutely. We would be happy to bring Board members through both, both school buildings. And we do have pictures. Robert DeBarry took a bunch, recent pictures. It'd be, it'd be very interesting, I think, for most Board members to see the progress in both schools, so happy to do it.
We'll do ribbon cutting one way or another, depending on how we can do it. But it'll be a celebration with the Board as well and the community.
I may have to come back.
Yeah.
That was quite the process.
All right, next up is Board Member Bellamy, followed by Mr. Donnelly.
So my one question got answered about the, how we factored in the demographics, so thank you for that. And then my other question has to do with the virtual program. Are we, we're adding, are we adding two positions to that or are we taking away two positions? We're adding two, right? There it is. Oh, right there. Yeah.
Mike Fletchstein, do you want to speak to that? Or is Mike Fletchstein on? Oh, there he is. There you go, Mike.
I am. Jim, can you refresh my memory on, on which ones those are? Currently, we took what they had in their BID or their budget last year, and we converted those, some of those positions from what were traditionally school-based calendars to year-round calendars so that we could provide the service in the summer as opposed to providing that service through addenda. Jim or Andy, do you have what specifically you're changing the 2.0?
Yes. So one of those positions was the Program Director, which is Ms. Boatman's position. And then we added four virtual program specialists. Those are going to be coordinators and IT personnel to help the programming part of that. And then we reduced three teachers that were coordinating the program in the past.
So the whole program will have, just have two people?
No.
No.
Okay, all right. So, okay, so that, that's what, that's what my query was. I don't know how we run a list by program with two people.
Entire program has 10 people.
Okay, yeah, all right, okay.
And to share the differences in last year's budget, we did not, so one of them is shoring up, just having someone running it. So that would be, he mentioned the name, so that's actually the person assisting in running the program. And the others are ins and outs, changes of teachers. And I think we'll get that direct position things in the Board Connect for you so that you can see the differences. And presently, we're about 3,500 students, but we really look and are hoping that our preference would be that those, that we keep those back in our neighborhood schools and our kids can transition back. We're keeping virtual as an option because a lot of parents like the ability to have virtual and in school at the same time. But those, really, it's a vehicle to have parents have a choice and remain in ASD rather than leaving ASD.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Next up, real quick for the record, I see that Board Member Holloman has joined us on Zoom as well. Member Donnelly, you're up next.
Yeah, thank you. Back to the dual enrollment coordinator. I listened carefully, but I guess I still don't understand why we need a new position to do this job.
We traded, Member Donnelly, we traded out a different function for this function. So if you go back to AMCS, the...
There it is.
AMCS has a reduction of a counselor and an addition of a coordinator. They serve two different functions, so we wanted to be true to the position that it was.
Is there... So where's it?
Savings, by the way. There's a cost savings in that transition.
So the counselor's more expensive than the coordinator position?
Yes.
That's correct.
This position, yeah.
Our teachers, our teachers average with benefits across the board about 111,000 per year. Counselors are a little bit more, and that's salaries and benefits. So this coordinator is significantly cheaper.
This was an effort to create a balanced budget and address the work where the work is.
Jim, I'm sorry, but I didn't follow that. If a, if a counselor's 111 or 115, this coordinator position's showing at 130. So how is that cheaper?
That was teachers.
Oh, no, I mentioned teachers. I'm sorry. Dave, we'll, I'll run this down and we'll make sure we put that in Board Connect, and we can provide more background on the position. There was a lot of things that happened with AMCS. One, UAA used to have, to provide a coordinator. And I don't know the actual name of the position, so we'll put that in Board Connect. And then they cut a position, so we had to fill a shortfall. There were a lot of, there's, there's always a lot of movement with UAA every year as to what, what our MOA with them looks like. And this coordinator was one of those fallouts of them looking at their budget, us looking at our budget and trying to reconcile.
Probably have Jim, Kathy, to speak to it directly.
Yes, to the Board President, to Dave, some of the responsibility that's, that's unique with this position is the liaison between ASD and UAA as well as shoring up our partnerships with Lower Yukon School District and coordinating with Ansept and just putting all the pieces together between the two entities in supporting the principal over King Tech High as well as AMCS.
And sorry for misthinking, our, our goal in combining the programs was for an overall savings. All right, next up, go back around, go start.
So on page, on page 18, I'm just wondering, ad spent, preschool, TAs, teachers, and a clerical, and we've got 10 there. And I know that our preschool classrooms, we've tried to get more in. Is this going to be, is this an increase over last year? And I think last, are we having more classrooms or just the fact that we're dividing them up or, I mean, what?
Member Marseth, these are classrooms currently in existence this year. We previously had thought that we would be using state grant money to be able to fund those positions. We don't currently by statute see the grant coming next year unless something changes in the legislative session. We really did just want to make sure we funded those five classrooms. It's really no change. Those classrooms are currently in existence. They just won't be funded out of a grant. That we, we knew that we had to plan on picking up that cost.
Okay, thank you. Member Hildy, got anything else? All right. Margot, did you have anything else?
I think, I think he just answered my question. I'm just wondering, because I was wondering the same thing with special services. We're, we're losing these, but, I mean, we had to show them as a reduction, but they're still, we still have them, right?
We're not losing them. Who's that?
The sped services.
We're not losing any of these positions altogether. We just had to assume them. Can you say that again, Jim?
So for the five sped classrooms, they're already in existence. Originally, in this current fiscal year's budget, we didn't plan to support those classrooms under general funds. We planned to support them under state grant. We don't expect the grant unless Senate bill aid or something else gets approved this session to provide funding for it. So we wanted to make sure upfront as part of the Board goals, as we went through it, we, we, we had to make sure we focused and provided that for reading, for the reading goal.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I think I'm done.
Okay, now, Member Donnelly, you had your hand raised. I don't know if it just didn't come back down or if there's another question.
Thank you. It just didn't come back down. I'm sorry.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. And Star, back around.
Well, I just wanted to make sure nobody else has any questions before.
Yep, I keep watching and looking for, I'm looking for hands, so.
So, and this isn't new, but I have to tell you, I'm really concerned. I mean, we're, we're doing the best we can on FY '21, '22. But that next year with all this SS money and we're taking grant money and we're funding teachers and it's, it's probably not going to be there. And I would think that even now, we need to start putting something together, a group or somebody that we can start strong avocation for funding for our school districts. Because if we wait until we're doing this budget, we're going to be behind the curve. So that's, that, I mean, I won't be here. I apologize to help you with that. But I think it's something this Board needs to take a serious look at.
Member Mitchell.
I just want a second what Star said, and that was one of the reasons I was asking if Jim was, if you were going to go through this budget during the meeting. And I think it's just important to stress that we're kind of dodging the bullet this year because of that S or money. S or money. S or, it's confusing with all the acronyms.
Member Hildy.
Good. Mr. President shared a projected shortfall, you know, three, four years out. Thought it was around 50 million, just so we're always using the same numbers.
We did provide a six-year projection at the pro forma. We can relook that. You know, the challenge with doing a six-year projection is if you worst case it, you, you have to assume flat revenue from the state six years out, and you really don't know what the state's going to do. So you come up with this huge negative outlook on the future. It, so it's, it's hard, it's hard to think that it's, it's really...
I think that's closer to accurate than Mike predicted.
Well, it has been for the last five, yes.
Yeah, we're already talking, Jim, being in another recession for five years. If we do come up with revenue for the state, it's going to be a year or two before we even see it. I mean, I think we are, you know, I don't like to be the pessimist or the downer, but I guarantee you, I'm seeing the writing on the wall, as I think many people are.
Add a quick question. Is... So I understand we're getting, you know, right around 50 million in the S or two funds. I'm trying to kind of track overall how they are flowing through the budget. Is there a different spreadsheet or a way to show here's 50 million or the 40 of the 50 and how it got utilized in this year's budget?
You'll be able to see the money trail for S or two as one of the grant lines underneath Fund II. What we didn't put in the budget book was a detailed by-school breakout of how the S or two funds were going to be used. Normally, on grants, we, we don't do that, but, but we can certainly work something up over the next weeks or so as, as we finalize how we're going to pull that off.
Yeah, no, and I'm not looking for it in the level of, you know, what school got what per se, but X went to teachers, X went to technology.
Similar to how we did S or one, you know, just big, large chunks.
Yeah.
We could do that.
The 20% of that is what.
Yeah. Yeah. Any other Board members with any other questions for Dr. Bishop and team? All right, I'm not seeing any other hands up. We do know that we will circle back around on this at tonight's regular meeting. And I have a post-it here to pull the budget for, from the non-action for any Q and A. And I don't know if that was when Dr. Bishop, you were maybe just going to run through the presentation.
Last minute, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we'll look forward to that. It's a non-action. The same folks, Jim and Mark and I will do that, yeah. Yeah, all right. I have up here a new business under discussion. I don't have any. I am straight up on, on budget right now. Member Marseth.
I don't have any new business. I just want to remind everyone that when we get ready to vote for this budget, that if you are not in favor of the budget, then you need to say, "These are my concerns," and give them back to the school district so that they can come back with new recommendations. But hopefully, we're not going to be putting in line item changes, that we either approve it or disapprove it.
So I remember Bellamy's handed in, Member Hildy's?
I don't understand. I mean, if, if you, you can suggest that or ask for that, but you can't tell us. We can't do line item budget amendments.
Madam Chair, did you recognize me?
Yes, Dave, I'll come back around to you. I hear what you're saying. Member Bellamy?
So relative to our future forecasts when it comes to the budgeting, in my way of thinking, the strategic planning framework that the district has put in place, that is going to help guide the future, if I'm thinking about it correctly. So if I'm not, can somebody correct me?
I agree with that, and a lot of shaking heads are saying yes.
Okay, all right.
Our golden guardrails guide our budget.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and Member Hildy?
Just in line with Member Marseth's recommendation that we also don't have to second any motions. Uh, just in line with member Marseth's recommendation that we also don't have to second any motions.
All right. So Dave, um, to come back around to your clarification, no, there is nothing, you know, stopping line item changes. We're just trying to make a effort as a board to, you know, up or down it and to work with it. You know, through the superintendent's office and, um, you know, stuff like that. So, um, but you're correct that, that, that cannot be, there's no policy saying you can't do it that way. If that clarifies? Okay. Next up on the agenda, the RFI log. Katie, do we have that where we can pull that up? And we're just going to take a quick peek at it because it's been expanded. I don't know if everything has a time associated with it, because I know that's a component of how we do things. We'll get a poll up here. Yeah. I think we'd have time on it.
At least, is that a new picture up above you in the, in the room there?
Well, this is, uh, we're up, we're in, uh, zero, zero, seven.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're not down in one fifty here. Yeah.
Okay.
Now finishing up, uh, doing vaccine clinic downstairs, so.
Got it.
It's very nice. A lot of smiling people. I, I now get the feeling.
It's nice to feel them.
Yep. All right, we're almost there. Yes. Okay. Questions not prioritized. It's like I say, it's grown. So what we need to do as a board is put it under, what are my three options? Immediate, short-term and long-term, basically. And we, yeah, or, or if it need to come out in the board connect or. It, in that, yeah. All right. So you want me just to start at the top? So, uh, starting up at the top, yep. Um, okay, so, so, Miss Margot, this is, this, you were looking for some information and this was, um, you know, we were kind of working on it tied to the anti-racism policy. Did you still need to?
So. We're. So we did, we decided as a board not to include it in the policy. Um, so I guess, uh, we can wait, we will get this information from the, uh, equity audit, I'm sure. Uh, unless, unless that's not the case, Dr. Bishop.
Yeah, I don't know what's coming out of the audit. I mean, we can put it under long-term for right now and see what's about to be audit. And then if we have to bring it back, that we're moving, but we'll just.
So one and two, one and two can be long-term. I'm fine with that.
Um, did you catch that, Katie? Yes. Okay. And then number three, uh, student data other.
Was that me too?
Yeah, that was the one that was, it was broken apart.
That, that's, I think, connected to the SROs discussion. So I guess that could go, um, it's not immediate. Uh, probably, I don't want to remove it, so I guess long-term.
Okay, so put them to long right now. Um, one of the things that I don't see, which I'm, and maybe it's would kind of get down, the time component, because I don't quite know how to kind of rank some of these without the time component of it. Yeah, uh, number six, or, uh, number four, which is, has a six one, I did. We did have a time component on this one. We did. Okay. Um, that we shared, uh, and, uh, specifically, um, to go back as far as we can find, we'd have to look into individual records. Um, because there isn't a racism. Uh, it's reported up through the, um, equity system all the way to the federal government and it's undiscrimination. So we would have to review every single file and then get that. And Andrew Sonnaboom, uh, could do that, uh, with Dante. Uh, and they said it would take about eighty hours. Times two people. As far back as that could go. So we could also, just as a board, say we don't want to work on it. Well, yeah, that's why, this is what we're doing right now is, um, eighty hours, two people. Is this something that, you know, the board wants to authorize? If they do, is it immediate, short-term, long-term? Or is it just kind of going to stay in the?
Well, okay, so if we shorten the time period, if we shorten the time period, because we've had not just last meeting, but in previous meetings, we've had public testimony that we need an anti-racism policy because there have been, quote, reports of racism in ASD.
That's not true.
I've heard it three times, four times now, Margot.
But that's not what drives the board.
But that's exactly what the public testimony was. Quote.
Well, I disagree because there's.
You don't think people said that?
I, I think people, I heard something different than what you're saying. You're trying to base a whole policy on whether there are instances of racism or not. When we don't even capture racism in this district, unless they started in the last four years, it's either discrimination, harassment, or some other legally protected guarantee under law. Equity is entirely different than that.
Let's get some common ground here. I am not arguing that that's the only reason for anti-racism part of policy. I'm not arguing that people said it was the only reason.
Margot and Dave.
There was testimony and the exact word to the testimony.
Member Donnelly. Please, I see where the issue is coming from. I see where this is going and it's not going to be immediately resolved, you know, right now. It's, and so, um, I just, we're going back and forth on something. Um, Star, you had a recommendation?
Um, I believe this is probably important information. I don't know that we need to go back since the time of conception. Because everything we're doing, you want to move forward, you don't want to move backwards. Um, if we need this for anything, um, I don't think we need it to prove what we need to do. I think we move forward and we document it as we're going.
Member Hildy.
Yeah, I'll just draw, like, I, we didn't document racism when we, you know, my child experienced it in our school, so I would be very concerned. I'm pulling data um, for that. Um, so I don't, my only priority for these RFIs is that they align with our board goals. So to the extent an RFI that's going to take a lot of time is really going to support a board goal, then I'm on board with it. And if not, it could also be very important, but it doesn't mean it should be taking time from the district if we're serious about really improving reading, really improving math, really improving student outcomes. There's a lot of important things, but they all cost time and time costs a lot of money.
Exactly. I also hear what member Donnelly is saying, Katie, um, because we do have the anti-racism policy going through governance and stuff like that. And he's trying to connect dots and stuff like that. So I hear what he's saying as well. For this moment, until I get a little bit more clarification on timeline and what is actually required and what is actually possible, you know, in the context of current time and what we're doing and what administration is doing, I'm going to put a pause on it. Not get rid of it or anything like that. I just want to get just a little bit more information before we, um, continue forward with the conversation. Okay, we got through four RFIs. So we're just going to pause there because it's three fifty-nine. We have, um, other people joining us for our next executive session. We will come back and do the rest of these at our next available opportunity, uh, to get these done, so they don't just sit. Board members, at this time, we need to log out of.
Need a motion to go.
I need a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of.
Reviewing the.
Contract review. And so I move that, that we move.
We move into executive session for the purpose of contract reviews.
Second. All right, I have a first and a second. Board members, you all have the link for executive session. I'll go ahead and adjourn the work session and go into the executive session now. And thank you to those that've joined us for our budget conversation.